The appointed time, we have a quorum. Welcome to the Public Accounts Committee. This is the second public hearing on Tumun Chalapkogling, which is chapter seven of Audit Report number eighty-three. The following witnesses are in attendance. Secretary for Transport and Logistics, Ms. Maybo Chan. Director of Highways, Mr. Tony Yao. As well as Commissioner for Transport, Ms. Angela Lee. As well as their respective teams. We'll start with part three of the report, and Mr. Michael Look will be the lead member. He will start by spending about fifteen minutes to go through the questions. Now, at the last meeting, another member raised some other questions, and I'm referring to Gen three and Gen four. Ms. Carmen Khan would like to follow up on these two papers first, Mr. Look, is that all right? All right, we'll give the floor to Ms. Carmen Khan. Good morning. Thank you, Chairman. Now, I have some questions in relation to the two papers. The secretariat, help us write to the secretariat. For Gen four, questions were put to the Secretary for Financial Services and the Treasury, as well as the Secretary for Transport and Logistics. There are questions on, for example, the additional costs and how the costs are determined. Now, in this report regarding Contract B, we understand that the provisions for price adjustments were utilized. So I'd like to first invite the administration to walk us through the reply in Gen four, so that we learn more about the function of this provision for price adjustment in relation to Contract A or Contract B, under which such provisions were used. The administration gave a reply in Gen three, and that's pages two and three. I'd like to know more about the aspect of the provision. Thank you. Ms. Law? As mentioned in the reply, the government would refer to the trend of public works projects during the contract period in determining the provision for price adjustment, and that's the standing practice for public works projects, as well as for funding applications. As for the specific contracts, the controller will make the provisions after discussing with the Project Cost Management Office of the Development Bureau. Now, I don't have anything to supplement to the reply of the Highways Department in relation to the stipulation of the contracts, but on the whole, I understand that the there is participation from the Bureau in relation to major projects. Ms. Khan? Can you explain what is set out in the letter? And that is the function of the price, or function of the provision for price adjustment. Can you just read out the answer for our benefit? It is said that the supervise, supervising officer has a right to use or make adjustments to the provision. Can you also explain this part? According to the reply, the provision seeks to cater for additional costs arising from, say, increase in the cost of labor and materials. The provision helps eliminate uncertainties arising from fluctuations in construction price. The provision is determined according to the government economist's forecast on the trend rate of change in prices of public sector building and construction output for the relevant contract period. Now, your question was whether the provision for price adjustments could be used for other purposes. Now, I'd say that the main purpose of the provision is to support the use of funds in price adjustments. However, there may be unforeseen circumstances arising from the project and that when the overall estimates are unable to meet the costs arising from the unforeseen circumstances, then the provision for price adjustment could be utilized. Ms. Khan? Now, in relation to the original purpose or the design of the provision for price adjustment, I'd like to draw the committee's or the public's attention to that the purpose is to set out or make a provision for price adjustment to meet the costs arising from unforeseen circumstances, and that the provision may be unique in each and every project, and that's set according to a certain percentage. According to the administration's explanation, they will base the decision on the government economist's forecast, on the trend rate of change along with, say, the change in the cost of construction and labor. And that, in such circumstances, the provision for price adjustment should not be of a similar nature with that of the project contingency. So that's in the case of cost overrun, you can make use of this provision. So, as explained in J four or the paragraph four, only when there is a surplus in the provision for price adjustment can the controlling officers use the surplus. So in future, I think the FSTB should keep a closer view on the provision parts, because otherwise, we do have doubts about the provision for price adjustment being inflated, and that there will be wiggle room for improper use of the estimates. So in relation to Contract B and provision for price adjustment, I'd like the Bureau to explain to us how much and to what extent the provision was used. Ms. Maybo Chan? I'll just say a few words, and then I'll give the floor to the Director of Highways to answer Ms. Khan's question. I'm referring to Gen three, page three, B two. Now here, it is said that the provision for price adjustment is spent on paying for the additional costs of arising from, say, increase in the cost of materials and labor, but because of the long period of construction and unforeseen circumstances, such as the interfacing issue arising from the reclamation projects in Hong Kong Port and COVID- nineteen contract claims, etc. The contingency provision could not support the additional costs as mentioned, and as a result, the Highways Department had to make use of the provision for price adjustment in order to meet the additional costs. Now, to answer Ms. Khan's question, I think that our answer is consistent with what the FSTB just said. Basically, we exercise discipline when it comes to contingencies. We just make use of the contingency provisions first, and only when other unforeseen circumstances arise leading to additional costs will we use the provision for price adjustment. So we'll continue to exercise discipline in the future in considering using the provision for price adjustment. I'll now give the floor to Mr. Yao, the Director of Highways, to supplement. Secretary already explained the principle of how this provision is to be used, similar to what the FSTB said. The provision will only be used in circumstances such as the issue of variation orders or the contract claim amount to the extent that the estimates have been exceeded, and we also follow the relevant rules in using the provision. And only when circumstances that are unforeseeable arise leading to the situations I mentioned will the provision be used. Now, in the first public hearing, we discussed what Contract B entailed. Let's take a look at Table three, and I'm referring to page eight. Let's go back to the Green Book. The Audit Report, page eight, Table three. Contract B, the original contract sum was eighteen point one billion dollars. Now, may I invite the Director of Highways to explain what the eighteen point one billion dollars entails? Yes, let's go to Table three. Five billion dollars were set aside as the provision, and we utilized one point two billion according to the original contract. And then in F, as you can see, about one point four billion dollars amounted to the provision for price fluctuation adjustment. Sorry, I didn't make myself clear. I want to know the breakdown of the eighteen point one billion dollars. I think at the first hearing, you explained that to us. So I want to know one point, eighteen point one billion dollars, and then one point three billion dollars for price adjustments altogether, and also five billion dollars for contingency. The original works contracts cost seventeen billion dollars, and then five point seven billion dollars for contingency, one point four billion dollars for, or rather, one point four billion dollars for contingency and five. All right, altogether, that's five, twenty-one point three billion dollars for final contract sum for Row B or Column B. The final contract sum is twenty-one point three billion. So for the final contract sum of thirty-six point seven billion dollars for Contracts A to H, you could say that for the additional three billion, I mean, for the additional sum, some three billion dollars came from the additional amounts under Contract B. So that means the original sum should be eight, eighteen billion dollars, or rather, eleven point seven billion dollars, and also five billion dollars for labor costs in construction. So according to the director's explanation, does it mean that for price adjustment, that's one point two plus one point four billion dollars, altogether two point six billion dollars for contract claims and also other unforeseeable circumstances? Because the original estimates could not be met, then the provision for price adjustment had to be utilized. The original provision was seven, or five point seven nine billion dollars, and altogether, because of the variation orders, the price fluctuation adjustment amounted to one point four billion dollars. The amount was spent on, or the amount included the original contract sum as well as the variation orders. So one point two for the original amount and one point four for variation orders. So what's relevant to the provision set originally is one point two and one point four billion dollars. And then for unforeseeable circumstances, another two point six billion dollars, is that right? Or is it that two, one point two plus one point four billion relates to price adjustments? And then two point four billion is added on to what I said just now, altogether three point seven billion dollars for unforeseen circumstances and contract claims. That's right. So five billion for the provision, and then one point two billion plus one point four billion for the contract sum and variation orders. So the remaining two point four billion dollars solely related to the variation orders. So the amount was in excess by five point six three five nine billion dollars. Right, after the, after taking away the sums related to variation orders, we have the amount not spent on variation orders. F relates to the provisions relating to variation orders. Ms. Khan? Now, through our exchange just now, I'd like to express my dissatisfaction. I think from the hearing, it's apparent that at the time of submitting the funding proposal, the administration did not exercise sufficient discipline. I mean, when was this floated, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen? That is why I come to Gen three, C. You applied for forty-six point seven billion dollars from Latch Call when the proposal was submitted. So in hindsight, I don't think the administration exercised sufficient restraint. And for provision for price adjustments, in fact, the actual sum spent was just one point two billion dollars, not as much as five billion dollars. And then for the overrun in one point nine C, that's five point six three five nine billion dollars. Any response from the administration? Who would like to go first, Director or Secretary? At the time of the funding application, I think we made this point last time. We prepared the pretender estimates. At the time, there wasn't a practice of submitting the revised estimates after we received the bids. So the estimates were two, twenty-four point nine billion dollars as of August twenty twelve. But then we received lower bids, and that accounted for the difference. For the provision for our price adjustment, after the survey, surveyed exercise, we then follow a formula, and that is for the trend rate of change in public sector buildings and construction works prices, we came up with a percentage, and that's around five or six percent subsequent, subsequently, following twenty twelve. And that's the formula. We've changed the practice. In fact, we prepared the pretender estimates, and we make revisions subject to the bids received.
Ms. Maybo Chan, I'd like to add that the, I understand the concerns of Ms. Carmen Khan. But as Mr. Yao said, I would like to stress that when we made the estimate, we followed the established procedures as well as the formula. Back then, we did not practice parallel tender. And we expected that different contracts would be involved. Ms. Khan said we didn't exercise enough discipline, and I am afraid that I could not agree with this. Ms. Carmen Khan? I believe what the administration is saying is that, given the circumstances and requirements back then, you met the requirements because there wasn't the practice of parallel tendering. And also, back then, there wasn't the Project Strategy and Governance Office, and there wasn't the new engineering contract approach. What the administration is saying is that you have come up with different approaches and reforms now. Looking back, there weren't such controls, measures, therefore... What you're saying is that you did not refuse to exercise discipline because back then there weren't such control measures. Secretary, I believe I have already expressed my stances just now. I have overrun, let's see if other members have questions about Gen three and Gen four. Mr. Michael Look?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll focus on occupational health and safety in Gen three. Three point two three, bracket A, mentions that Contract B in April twenty fifteen, which page? Are you referring to the report? Page forty-seven of the Audit Report. All right. It's about occupational safety. Three point two three, bracket A, mentions that in April twenty fifteen, there was a fatal accident. How come the summons was dismissed? Were there any issues with the admission of evidence? Also, were there any penalty mechanisms for contractors? Contractor B, during March and May, its performance was said to be poor. Did the performance assessment affect the bidding of contracts of Contractor B? Also, three point two three, bracket B, mentions that there was a non-fatal accident. In April twenty sixteen, a worker passed away in the fatal accident, and there was a fine of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Were there any penalties imposed on Contractor A? Any points deducted from March to May? The performance rating was very poor in terms of Contractor A's performance. Any consequences faced by Contractor A? Also, three point two four touches on non-fatal reportable accidents. Contractors have to report accidents to Consultant X. How come Consultant X did not compile the relevant information? Were there any standards for Consultant X to record all this information? Also, Contractors A and B submitted reports late for at least nine times. Any points deducted for Contractors A and B? Any penalty mechanisms? Mr. Yao?
Chairman? On construction safety, as mentioned, there was a fatal accident on the seventh of April twenty fifteen. Back then, the Labor Department followed up on the incident. However, there wasn't a penalty like the incident happened with Contract A. Also, there was a fatal accident under Contract A. The Labor Department prosecute, made a prosecution, and there was a fine of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because of the fatal accident, the quarterly performance rating of Contractor A. Well, for Contractor B, the performance rating was very poor. For Contractor A, apart from the very poor performance rating, the overall site safety performance was also very poor. With this performance rating, it would affect the bidding of the contractor for other contracts. So it would be very unlikely for these contractors to successfully bid other contracts. Mr. Look mentioned a number of things just now. There were nine delays or late submissions of accident reports for Contractors A. There were two late submissions of two accidents. And for Contract B, there was seven late submissions. So in total, nine late submissions, of which eight late submissions concerned accidents on construction sites. They might involve twisting of ankles or fingers, some mild injuries. And the injured worker might come back after a period of time saying there was mild injury. Also, another reason for late submissions was because it took time for investigation. Say, a few days after the incident took place, you got a report saying that the worker got injured. So it would take time to investigate when the incident happened, for example, and whether insurance would come into play. So oftentimes, late submissions were due to time needed for investigation. To solve this in twenty twenty-two, the Construction Site Safety Manual sets out that we shouldn't wait for the investigation to be done. Instead, the report or the incident should be included. So that was the moving average. According to the manual, any incident that warrants investigation should be included in the report first. So there were nine late submissions because of the reasons stated. There were three incidents that weren't reported. And these were touched on in our safety meetings. It was understood that in one case, the worker's back was injured, and another two, the other two cases involve injury of fingers as well as twist- and another two, the other two cases involve injury of fingers as well as twisting. And the three cases weren't reported because of some typo issues. Mr. Look. Concerning the late submissions, well, I don't think it should be the workers' responsibility. According to some workers we talked to, they were told by their bosses that they didn't have to report the incidents immediately. Believe employers and employees or between management and workers, there should be a consensus on whether an incident should be reported to prevent late submissions. So for Contractors A and B, they got poor and a very poor performance rating respectively. You said for a period of time, they wouldn't be able to successfully bid for any contracts. How long were you referring to? One or two months? Or one or two years? Would they fail to bid contracts from the Highways Department only or other Public Works Department? Mr. Yao. When we invite tenders, we look at the contractor's performance in the previous three years. If there were records showing that they performed poorly, then it would affect their success rate. So we looked at the performance rating in the previous year. And if they show improvement in their performance rating, it would affect them less in relation to their success rate. Mr. Look, Contractor A got a very poor performance rating. Also, the worker concerned took all the safety measures, but somehow the metal fence came off, which led to the death of the worker. Could you tell us for how long the contractor uh wasn't allowed to bid for other contracts? Mr. Yao, as mentioned, we look at the performance of the contractors in previous three years. If for two quarters in a row, the contractor got a very poor performance rating, they wouldn't be allowed to submit tenders or bid for any contracts. I would provide information on how long the contractor wasn't allowed to bid for other contracts. Mr. Look, how much time is left for me? Alright. Four point one four. Standard clearance time. According to the report, paragraphs four point one four to four point one six. It says here that Operator A from May twenty twenty four, there were problems with the heavy vehicles. And therefore, vehicle recovery operations could not be held. And the operations took twenty to hundred and fourteen minutes. I think this is a negligence on the operator's part. Given the design of the Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge, it was quite tilted. When the Transport Department deployed the two heavy vehicles, did it conduct any tests? Did you try to find out whether the heavy vehicles would work in the tunnel? Paragraph four point one six says that the Transport Department together with EMSD in September twenty twenty four ascertained the underlying reasons for the issue relating to the heavy recovery vehicles. What were the underlying reasons? Well, it said here that there were some improvement measures. Do these measures incur additional costs? And who would be responsible for the additional costs? The management company, the supplier of the vehicles, or TD or EMSD? Commissioner of Transport. On the operation of the heavy vehicles, the tunnel is sixty meters underground. And the issues happened with vehicles that transport heavy concrete. For vehicles that have to take this heavy load, there are special requirements to these vehicles. These two have um vehicles are government vehicles. And we got the professional advice from the EMSD to procure these two vehicles. And they were deployed in other types of tunnels. And they were effective in the operations in other tunnels. And the report is mentioned that there were seven incidents where the vehicles broke down. And there were issues with the wheels because the front wheels of the vehicles tilted up off the ground. There were demonstrations on how to use the vehicles to ensure that the operator could use the vehicles effectively. Also, we took measures to ensure that the vehicles were functioning properly. The front wheels of the vehicles tilted up off the ground because of the design of the tunnel. Also, there were uncertainties in relation to the load that the vehicles could bear. In future, we would enhance the load of the vehicles so that even on steep ground, the vehicles could function steadily and properly. This is what we're going to do with the relevant departments. Well, government vehicles have to be approved by the EMSD. If we get the approval, we will carry out the modification works within this year.
Mr. Michael Look, I want to clarify a point. So that car did not belong to the contractor. It was a government vehicle. And the HRVs were used not just for the link but for other tunnels as well. Is that the case? So those were government vehicles, Ms. Angel Lee. HRVs of the same model were used for other tunnels. But the incidents happened because of the gradient of the bridge. So those cars were government cars. They they were procured with the advice of the EMSD, Mr. Michael Look. So were those HRVs put at the link for use at any time? Or were those cars supposed to support other tunnels? Those two vehicles were stationed at the tunnel for emergencies. So if that's the case, the cars were put there. After the first or second incident where the wheels were tilted off, remedial actions should have been taken back then. Whose responsibility was it? It was it highways or was it Transport Department? Why did it take seven instances before improvements were made? Commissioner of our Transport. When we were notified of the problem, we kept following up on that. We wanted to find out whether it was the axle loading or whether it was because the contractor wasn't using the HRVs right. So we joined the EMSD in testing the HRVs out. We first found out that the cars were used in the right way. So then we dug deeper. We assessed the cars and we found the most prudent way to go was to increase the axle loading where appropriate. We had to get to the root cause for the problem and that took time. We had to run tests. We had to find out the reason behind the seven incidents. So we're trying to proceed with the improvement plan. Mr. Michael Look. It's a question. Were these HRVs tested in different scenarios before the procurement? Or was it assumed that because the HRVs worked elsewhere and the HRVs were assumed to work at the bridge? The Commission Commissioner said it wasn't because of operation. It was a problem with the load. We have seen what happened. Who paid for the expenses? Was it the contractor, the TD or Highways Department? Commissioner. We're talking about government vehicles, so the retrofit uh the retrofitting would be performed by the government. Now, on testing beforehand, we're talking about the new tunnel. Those vehicles were used in other tunnels. It was the first time we were using those HRVs for a grade for tunnels with a gradient, meaning this two Montreal Quoc link. So there was this difference in the environment between this link and other tunnels. So we had to find a way to make sure those HRVs would work with the gradient at this link, Mr. Michael Look. So you have to be mindful of the local conditions in the future. I've overrun, so I will save my other questions for later. Mr. Edmund Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to write on a point from Mr. Michael Look. It's about the industrial accident at the construction site. We've heard that for paragraph three point two four, the government said those were minor injuries. The investigation took time, so there was late reporting. Is this the usual practice? Is this a common practice among contractors of the government, Mr. Tong Liya? Now for these incidents, they may be minor incidents. Someone had a back pain or they sprained their ankles or someone hurt their fingers. Those were the cases for the nine incidents. The workers didn't feel the injury right away. It may be several days later. The pain came through, so the worker reported what happened. The question was whether that was an accident on the construction site. So a probe ensued and you had to find out the what and when. That's common in other construction projects on other sites as well. So in twenty twenty two, we updated our construction site safety manual. That meant even with suspected cases, even when investigations still were required, the construction site had to report the incident first and we include those cases in the tally. Later on, you may be able to rule out such cases as industrial accidents. In the past, it was investigation first, inclusion later. And several months may elapse. But now with this update, we report first, we include the incident first and rule out later. So now we have all these safety measures in place, Mr. Edmund Wong. I'm pleased to note this update to the manual. Now, I'm looking at three point two four A in the audit report. Contractors A and B, two and seven cases of late submission respectively, delays ranging from eight to ninety-eight days. Are we saying it's ninety-eight days from the worker letting the employer know? Or are we talking about ninety-eight days from the date of injury, Mr. Tong Liya? It's ninety-eight days from the day of injury to reporting. Are you talking about reporting the incident to the government or the worker reporting the matter to the employer? It's from the injury to the inclusion of the case in the tally. So you start with the day of injury. Injury and then investigation. That case isn't in the tally yet. And then once it's included, that's where you get the ninety-eight days. Mr. Edmund Wong. I find it puzzling. We leave aside the construction site safety menu, cap two A two employees compensation ordinance. I have an accounting firm. We take workplace injury seriously. You have an employer who becomes aware of an injury or contract a an occupational disease under the ordinance. It doesn't matter whether that injury or disease will give rise to liability to come and say and you the employer has to follow Schedule A and B and report the matter to the Labor Department. And then you have to offer compensation and follow the rest of the procedure. So even if someone simply hurts their fingers or twists the waist, you have to report the case first. That's a legal duty. So when do you exercise that discretion, meaning investigation first and report later, Mr. Tong Liya? For those nine cases, the Labor Department was informed of the cases. But the question was whether to include those cases in the tally. That's why we got what we have. What do you mean by putting that in the tally? Cap two A two says workplace work-related injury. It doesn't matter whether it gives rise to your duty to offer compensation. You have to do it. So is there a gap between what you have in cap one two A two and what you do there? Now for the nine cases, those involved minor injuries, minor accidents. So the question was whether more than three days of sickness leave was involved. The requirements were to let the LD know within fourteen days. But the incident, but the investigation was about whether the injury had to do with the workplace. In some cases, it was found that the injury had nothing to do with the workplace, so the case was not reported, Mr. Edmund Wong. I don't get it. It's the law. I thought you had to follow the law strictly. Report the case within fourteen days. How come they exercised that discretion? They investigate before reporting the case. The law of the land sets the minimum requirements. No lettering, for example. You have to stick to it. I may be a very moral person. I decide to turn to a empty rubbish bin when I want to throw away waste. So what sort of discretion did they follow when they chose not to follow the law, Mr. Tong Liya? They had to be sure. They had to investigate whether the injury arose from the work site. So now the practice is to report first. Back then, there there was investigation. In some cases, the investigator first thought it wasn't a work-related injury, so they did not report the case. Now the practice is different. You report first. Now, back then, the menu wasn't in place. It wasn't updated. So back then, when it was found an injury wasn't related to work, the case wasn't reported. I do agree that now. I do agree that now you should report the case first, Mister Edmund Wong. I want to follow up on a point. I, i- it's not about my view, you don't have to agree with it, it's a statutory requirement. But based on my limited knowledge of the law, I am not a lawyer. When a worker gets hurt and you delay in your reporting, the first defendant should be the contractor, being the employer, the highways department and the government. Contracted out of the work, the government may end up being the second defendant. The government has the responsibility to monitor what goes on. The highways department said. Now on compliance with the menu. So consultant X did not compile management information and then in September twenty twenty-four, the highways department informed audit that according to consultant X, there were two and seven cases of late submission of the preliminary accident report, delays from eight to ninety-eight days. Meaning had the audit not approached hi, the highways department, the government wouldn't have been made aware of what happened. So that's what I take from the text here. So is that the case, Mister Tong Liya? The cases required investigation to decide whether some cases should be informed or al- alerted. The investigation took time and that led to the delay in reporting. So we wrote to the contractor about the delays in reporting, Mister Edmund Wong. Let's focus on the future instead. I, I have no idea what the labor department makes of what happened. Now you now have the construction site safety menu. Is that menu now fully in line with Hong Kong's relevant laws, Mister Tong Liya? Yes. So we're now being even stricter than the law. It's now reporting the case first, putting that in the tally first. We take safety measures. Doesn't matter if that case is subsequently ruled out. So yes, the menu is in line with the relevant laws, Mister Wong. The law is clear, the employer has the duty to report the injury, failure to do so is in breach of the law. Someone, a worker, accidentally gets hurt because of their own actions, that's still a workplace injury. It may not be the employer's fault, but that's an injury in the workplace, so the employer has to report the matter. Now I have some questions about the fatal accidents. Were there delays in reporting the fatal reports or were there investigations before the fatal cases were reported? Now for serious injuries and fatal cases, the law was followed. That meant letting the police know within twenty-four hours, oral notice, written notice and the engineer was alerted. So for those two fatal cases, the law was followed, Mister Edmund Wong. Three point four, paragraph three point four. Three point four B to three point five. It's about the retaining wall. Unforeseen soft material was found and that led to caused the material implications. What improvement measures have we taken now to ensure greater certainty? Now for that slope, we could not sink the drill holes into that space, into that site, it's along Long Moon Road. It's a one lane road, we couldn't seal off the road for months. So we could not sink the drill holes exactly on the spot. So we did a drilling fifteen meters away. Now we're exploring this geophysical survey. In the, the past, it was about drill sinking drill holes into points, but now we're using electromagnetic waves to extrapolate the location of the rock layers with more dots, we can have a, create this plane where we can speculate the rock level. Hong Kong is full of underground utilities courts, which do have to assess whether this technology will work, Mister Edmund Wong. So with what happened, let's explore technology to see what works, three point one oh. I'm turning to three point one oh and three point one one. It's about the tunnel vitreous enamel panel walls. In twenty sixteen, the highways department looked at the plan and offered and did not give comments, but then when the work started and then the comments came through. So why? Twenty sixteen, no comment, and then after the work started, the comments came through. Mister Tong Liya. Now it's, these are the tunnel VE walls. Six thousand five hundred panels were larger ones, two point nine meter tall, almost three meters. In twenty sixteen, our colleagues followed the guidelines and thought there was no problem. And then in twenty nineteen, now for a two point nine meter tall vertical panel, those were heavy panels. To replace those panels, you could not do it manually, you had to use machines and you had to seal off the road. So in twenty nineteen, our colleagues found out future maintenance and repair would involve road closure and massive amounts of resources. So it would be better if we could keep the panels at a size where you could move them manually. So we looked at the guidelines and then in twenty twenty-three, we updated our guidelines. So we decided to standardize the practice in twenty twenty-three, we in, updated our design guidelines for tunnels. The parts in the tunnel should be made such that they could be replaced manually as much as possible. By twenty nineteen, our colleagues found, thought it was best to keep the parts as something where you could replace manually. So in twenty twenty-three, we updated our guidelines. So that should offer clarity for the future and that would be a source of reference for colleagues in the future when they offer advice on works, Mister Edmund Wong. I heard two things, one, twenty sixteen, they thought it was okay. And then in twenty nineteen, they had a different idea. I get it, with different guidelines, so positions change, I get it. Now, three point one three A. The contract document did not specify the works for an emergency vehicular access. Now, people following our webcast may have little idea what's going on here. So my question is, a variation order ensued, five point five million dollars. So can the government tell us, why did the contract not spell out the EVA, emergency vehicular access?
Well, that involved a maintenance step hole outside of which there is an emergency vehicular access, which is also for maintenance. However, no signage is provided, no marking is provided. And it doesn't even spell out whether it's a con, it should be made of concrete. So the drawing is quite blank, it doesn't provide the signage or road marking. And that is why we issued a variation order to set up these specific details. And that the maintenance step hole would be surrounded by concrete road and that proper signage should be erected. So that's for the purpose of providing road signage that didn't get specified in the original drawing. I don't quite understand because for road marking and signage that you mentioned, we follow either our own laws or international standards. It is impossible to create a road without any signage. Here it says EVA, is that right? Right, emergency vehicular access. Why is it that signage was provided for other parts of the area but not the sign for emergency vehicular access? The maintenance step hole comes in a square. And that in the drawing, we, I mean, the materials and signage markings should have been provided, but all of them were missing in the drawing. And that is why before commencement of, commencement of works, we had to um specify the details such as whether the road should be constructed with concrete. Now I'm guessing that in the drawing, you have a shaded box marking the marked as the maintenance step hole, but all of the other details were missing, right? Like the member said, um, the drawing provided the maintenance step hole as well as the road. The road should have come with marking and signage, but then only a box was provided. The drawing didn't spell out the signage and marking etcetera. So there was an omission. Still, I don't understand. We have engineers and professionals in the government. As I understand, these details should be provided in the drawings of each and every project. Well, for example, um, say if we organize a basin banquet for a thousand people and we ask the FSD for approval, we need to plan for an EVA and we also need to prepare proper uh drawings, including how many fire buckets should be put etcetera. I don't understand why there was an omission here, right? Um, there was a box marking the maintenance step hole and the surrounding road, but then the uh specific details were all missing. We checked the drawing and found the omission, but uh the project involved over a thousand or even two thousand drawings. So for this part, indeed, the road marking, the materials and the signage were not specified. We've urged our colleagues to check properly in the future. This could be done by say random inspection or a comprehensive check. And in December or October twenty eighteen, we revised internal guidelines. And that is for contracts involving different documents, drawings or contracts with different terms and conditions, lists. We set up in the internal guidelines, how checks should be performed to avoid a repeat of such incidents. Right, so the guidelines were promulgated in twenty eighteen, before that, I suppose you relied on the judgment of your professional colleagues. Now, we had a public hearing on NAMI and they also talked about issuing circulars, memos to remind colleagues. Of course, reminders are important. I want to know whether you have included this in your SOP or specifically. There should be a checklist for professionals examining the drawings. They should tick boxes and see whether all the requirements are met. You can't just issue reminders because it's subjective in nature. I have great sympathy for your colleagues to some extent because it's dependent on the professional judgment as to what constitutes an omission. They could be inadvertently um held liable. So you should prepare a checklist, make sure the drawing comes with say signage and marking, materials etcetera. Now, government departments may issue over a thousand reminders. That means I need to check all the circulars and reminders to s, to see if I'm doing everything right. So how about putting it in your SOP and provide a checklist? As I said, we publish internal guidelines on random inspection and holistic inspection. And after conducting the inspections, colleagues are required to prepare records. The records should come with, say for example, the name and title of colleagues and the date of inspection and the outcome. Now like Mister Wong said, for contract D, it involved six thousand documents and one thousand eight hundred drawings. Instead of going through each and every drawing, the exercise could also involve cross-referencing different documents and drawings. Now, we are now adopting the um BIM in preparing three D drawings. And this should help because with this technology, cross-referencing drawings would be much easier and omissions could be identified more easily. Now we've published internal guidelines to remind colleagues how random inspections and checks should be conducted and how records should be prepared. But by and large, we rely on BIM, uh especially when public works um are involved, there tend to be more documents and drawings. That's true, we have more and more projects nowadays. But we want to avoid variation orders, we want to avoid omissions because thi- this could lead to additional costs. The purpose of the public hearing here is to encourage the use of technology. Still, even with adoption of technology, we rely on the professional judgment of your profession, uh of your colleagues. I want to know whether you have included the internal guidelines, um as you said, published in twenty eighteen in the SOP. Well, it's now the internal guidelines that you mentioned are effective in the sense that our colleagues performing the check will definitely refer to, to them. I'd like to go to part four, page fifty-nine and then um that would be the end of all my questions. I'd like to go to four point one seven. Four point one seven A. Once an overhyped vehicle is detected, the operations staff will be alerted by the alarm and proceed to stop the vehicle concerned from entering the tunnel. I think that has to do with the clearance of the tunnel. B, when suspecting vehicles are over length, over width based on the observation onsite or via CCTV, so and so forth. Does it mean that the operations staff will be monitoring the CCTVs all the time, so as to stop any suspicious vehicles? About detecting overhyped vehicles, we have the relevant detectors. The detectors will go off and sound an alarm when the overhyped vehicle is detected and it's for the staff to decide whether to let the vehicle enter the tunnel. Does it mean that there is some sort of a gate? Yes, it comes with a gate with detectors for detecting overhyped vehicles. The alarm goes off when such a vehicle is detected. Well, because uh I read here that um it's monitored through CCTV and I'm happy to learn that you're adopting technology and you're going smart. I have no other questions for parts three and four. Next, Mister Louis Long. Thank you. Well, I declared it la- last time, but I need to declare once again. The contractor that I represent and reader may be involved in projects that will be included in this report. So that's my declaration. Part three. That's what my questions are about. Some colleagues asked questions on three point one one, the VE panels. And I have a question from another perspective. According to three point one one, at the planning stage, the highways department project team and consultant X at the planning stage, the highways department project team and consultant X has circulated the reference design drawings of the panel to the maintenance office of highways department. For comment. The maintenance office, and that is the anti-regional office, may had no comment on the reference design. After approval of the final design, the anti-regional office then made a comment. In paragraph two point two eight and note thirty two, anti-regional office did not make any comment about the thermal barrier uh before the tendering exercise. It only expressed concern after tendering started. According to Gen three submitted by this, the T L B dated the eighth of January. In examining the tender documents for contract B, the anti-regional office considered that the spray type thermal barrier is more acceptable for use inside the tunnel. This method is also used in the mainland. And the anti-regional office therefore did not make any comment. Now, my observation is that when documents were circulated, the anti-regional office did not make a comment. The the office made comments only after tendering had started. And this practice was repeated. My question is, what measures will be adopted to make sure that the regional office will make necessary comment or make comments if necessary before tendering to avoid a repeat of such incidents? Well, the two scenarios you mentioned differ. Now, about the two point nine meter V panels close to three me- meter high in twenty sixteen, there was no requirement as to mental, I mean, a manual dismantling. And it was later found that the V panel should be split split into two rows to save maintenance efforts. That was a very good suggestion. And we regularized this approach in twenty twenty three to make sure that all our works teams, colleagues would adopt the same approach. So that is why we we updated the manual about the spray type or board type thermal barrier. At the time, both methods were acceptable. And then subsequently, fires broke out in some cities in the mainland. In terms of the strength of spray type and board type of fire resistance, it was later found that the board type is more durable, and that is why we updated the guidelines as well. Now, the anti's uh anti-regional office found the use of a spray type thermal barrier acceptable because of the circumstances and the knowledge at the time. Because of the subsequent developments, we found that the board type thermal barrier um is more effective, and that is why, again, we've updated the guidelines for colleagues' reference. So according to the director, this is not about the performance of the New Territories Regional Office. This is actually due to tech- technological advancements or subsequent developments that you later decided to adopt a higher standard. That's true. Now, the anti-regional office is responsible for repair and maintenance of the whole project. And the office has given us a lot of comments on adoption of technology and on keeping an eye on latest developments. And that accounts for our subsequent changes. So I'd like to place a footnote here. I'm not picking on the anti-regional office. It's just that I saw a repeat of such incidents in this report, but I noted the director's comment. Anyway, I'd like to turn to another question. Apart from the highways department, there are also other works departments and works teams within the government approving projects. What measures could be put in place to make sure that if comments are to be made by these departments, they should make them as quickly as possible and especially not after the commencement of works? Thank you for your questions. The highways department has very close liaison and communication with other departments and the bureau. I know that there is a mechanism in place uh for the departments to solve problems together. Now, Mr. Long, you mentioned some incidents relating to a technical glitch or the use of materials. Say, in the mainland, um the latest developments may be observed and there may be new materials used. The engineers, consultants, or the contractors may not be familiar with the latest developments. So experience sharing is of importance. In the future, we will continue to keep a closer liaison. I understand under the Development Bureau, units are established to achieve higher procurement and cost efficiency. So according to this mechanism, there are exchange of views among government departments. In terms of cost procurement of materials, when before we submit the proposal to the Legislative Council, we also consult the P C M O which could help us procure more efficient and newer materials. Mr. Long. Team spirit is essential when it comes to project management. So uh I note that there is this mechanism within the government. Keep up the good work. My next question is construction safety, uh construction site safety. This is something close to my heart. Now, another colleague already referred to three point two four in this report about a hundred and seventy three non-fatal but reportable accidents. One hundred and thirty of which related to contract B, and that means twenty incidents per year. Now, just now, um the administration explained that with a poor performance rating, some sort of sanction be put in place and their uh future chances of winning the tender will be affected. In twenty twenty two, I understand that the construction site safety manual was also updated. Apart from updating the construction site safety manual, has the highways department adopted other measures to enhance construction site safety? And step up the performance or step up the monitoring of performance of contractors in this regard? Uh are there specific measures apart from updating the manual?
Mr. Yao. Mr. Long mentioned about the construction site safety manual in relation to how the accident should be reported. There was a more stringent mechanism in place now. There are different safety regulations and measures. However, what matters is that the relevant construction site workers would follow these guidelines. Therefore, in twenty twenty three, the Development Bureau introduced a circular. That's about smart safety system. It is the four S system. It adopts smart systems such as smart cameras so that the camera can capture the entire construction site. In case there are workers that are in a dangerous position, it could be captured by the camera. Or say there are irregularities or safety measures aren't in place, the camera could be captured too. Also, each worker is given a wristband and a safety helmet. This can help monitor the situation of each worker as well as the location and position of workers. For example, some parts of the construction site only allow workers which have undergone who have undergone training to enter those parts. So currently for contracts over thirty million dollars will adopt the four S system. The highways department in twenty twenty four asked all construction sites to adopt the four S system. Mr. Long. It's great. I represent the real estate sector. I think that this four S system is effective. Contracts over thirty million dollars, all the works to be carried out have to adopt the four S system. Would you consider lowering the threshold so that contracts involving a lower sum would have to adopt the four S system? Mr. Yao. For construction works that are not of a large scale but involves a huge sum, they may adopt the four S system as well. As we continue to promote the four S system, the cost of using such a system would drop. The cameras as well as the helmets aren't too costly. So where appropriate, we will adopt the four S system. We don't necessarily have to stick to the thirty million dollar threshold. Mr. Long. Construction safety is crucial. I hope all construction workers as well as employers would adopt this four S system because lives are valuable. Now I want to come to part four. Paragraph four point five of the report. It mentions about the manpower shortage. Every month, they were eight to thirty staff short, representing six percent to twenty one percent shortfall of the manning level. Four point six A says that eighteen staff were short, accounting for thirty percent of the manning level during the peak. The transport department conducted a review in twenty twenty three. And after the review, the staff number would increase from a hundred forty to a hundred fifty. Given the persistent shortage of manpower, how come in the next M O M agreement, the number of staff should increase to a hundred and fifty? Would that aggravate the shortage of manpower or the substandard manning level? Are there any measures in place to ensure that the contractors in future will be able to recruit enough manpower? Commissioner for Transport. We are aware that there was a manpower shortage problem in the first contract. We need people with the with physical fitness as well as the relevant expertise to help manage the tunnel. The audit report was released in June. We were four staff short in terms of maintenance and repair staff. As at December twenty twenty four, there was no more shortage of manpower. We put in place an arrangement requiring contractors to deploy staff so that the total number of working hours of staff would meet the standard stated in the contract. We asked them to meet the requirements in relation to the manning level. We have ways to monitor the whether they are up to standard, for example. There should be a drop in terms of the number of vehicles committed um involving in speeding. How come we are increasing the manning level still for the eight staff short? There are operation staff. We need more operational staff because when the Two Moon Chapaq tunnel was commissioned, we had fifteen thousand um hundred and seventy five seventeen thousand five hundred vehicles on average every day. And the vehicle flow exceeded the expected number. Therefore, we think that we need a higher staff manning level compared to the first contract. As for maintenance staff, we have increased the number to two. We need maintenance staff for the electronic system. The tunnel has been in operation for a while. And we noticed that quite a number of staff helping to man the electronic system have to work overtime. And we see that there is a manpower shortage issue. That's why we ask to increase the number of these staff. We ask the operator and contractor to engage more staff and we've been in talks about how to ensure the staff manning level from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four. The operator conducted about twenty nine internal trainings so that their staff could obtain the relevant qualifications to work in different posts. In August twenty twenty four, the operator worked with the relevant institute under the Employee um Retraining Board to hold trainings. And with training subsidy, they wanted to recruit more staff to join the industry. For members' reference, on the twenty seventh of December last year, we activated a new contract. And so far, they've been able to meet the requirements. Mr. Long. From what I understand, the administration has put in place measures and it has been working with the contractors. Problems encountered in relation to manpower shortage in the previous contract have now been settled. And with the commencement of the new contract, you have enough manpower. and the same issue will not arise. Is that right? We can be rest assured that the new contract will run smoothly. Commissioner. There were staff who resigned from the post in building maintenance. But the new staff will commence in February and we should have enough manpower after that. We have Ms. Yuna's Young speaking for the first round and Ms. Carmen Khan and Mister Michael Look speaking for the second round. There will be a break after Ms. Yuna's Young's round. Thank you, Chairman. Three point one three. About the vetting of tender documents. Mister Yao said that new technology will be used to help vet tender documents. There are certain contract documents that were uncovered in the tender. That's why it was problematic. Details were not specified in the contract documents and technology cannot help solve that. For example, Contractor D knew that a vehicular access would have to be built, but this isn't, this wasn't specified in the contract documents. Could you explain more how you wouldn't make use of technology? For example, would you, for example, make use of B I M to vet the tender documents? So that you can ensure that all the relevant details and contract documents would be included in the tender? As far as I understand, certain details aren't included in the tender documents. That's why V O's had to be issued. How could you avoid situations where details weren't set out in the tender documents? Mister Yao. We're talking about the vehicular access surrounding the maintenance depot. This was not included in the drawing. The contract terms, for example, are usually standard. We're talking about about two thousand drawings here. Each drawing is self-explanatory. However, in this case, certain details were missed out in the drawings. And when we gather all the drawings, when we put together all the drawings, we could not. There was something that were missed out. So we now rely on BIM. Where structural drawings or elevation drawings could be produced. And with the images, we could detect any potential problems. So this is how we're going digital. On documents, we could also make use of digital technology to help check the details. We have to learn how to make use of A I to check, to check all the tax tour mistakes. So we want to digitalize all the contract documents. And for the drawings and images, we want to come up with three D images relying on BIM. With digitalization, we should be able to get the support our colleagues need. And this will significantly enhance our colleagues' ability in vetting the tender documents. A follow-up question. You said digital technology could help solve the problem. While I'm not familiar with these tender documents. Are they purely tax or are there drawings that have to be dealt with by contractors? Do the talk, tender documents set out all the details of a construction work? You may rely on A I or technology to improve the tender documents. But will the technology help solve the problems mentioned in three point one three A and B where there were discrepancies between contract documents and the drawings? We have civil works contract and other types of contract, and normally drawings would be involved. For design and build contractors, normally the contractors that come up with the drawings. They are reference drawings that are not too detailed. They show what would be included in the construction works. In other types of contracts, detailed drawings would be involved. And in these cases, with all the detailed drawings, BIM would help. Ms. Young. We understand that technology may be able to help solve some problems. What if the drawings submitted at the beginning aren't too detailed? It just, they just give us a direction of what would be included in the construction works. They wouldn't show how thick the pipes have to be. As mentioned, over a thousand images and drawings were involved. Consultant X as well as the contractors might work on the drawings together in the meantime. However, how do you deal with the discrepancies between the tender documents and the contract documents? This cannot be solved by technology. You have to decide how detailed the tender documents have to be at the beginning. I don't think you have come up with a solution for that yet. Say certain details aren't set out in the contract documents, but the contractors are aware that they have to take forward such works. Say the contractors know that the vehicular access have to be, will have to be built. And they all know what a vehicular access is, but this is not set out in the tender document. And they could say, because you did not set out the details in the original document, they could ask for a V O or additional cost. How detailed do the documents have to be? I think in this particular, the contractor had the knowledge that the vehicular access had to be built. But they blamed the administration for not including the details in the documents at the first place. How could you ensure there is trust between the contractors and the government? I think the contractors was using an excuse to ask for an additional cost from the government. How can the government prevent such a situation in the future? How can it prevent disputes with contractors? I think in this particular case, the responsibility falls on the contractor, not the government. However, now the government has to bear the cost. How can you hold the contractors accountable in this situation? Making sure that additional costs wouldn't be incurred.
Mister Tong Liya. Now, the emergency vehicular access, it wasn't specified, not spelled out in the drawing. And then we provided the information and asked the contractor to build it. Five point five million dollars, that part wasn't spelled out. Ms. Young mentioned the technology. The tool would have helped us avoid most of the problems. Once you visualize the details, you can avoid many omissions and discrepancies. Once you get into the detail design and the building, you have different contractors working on the detailed design under this contract. There are different contracts for detailed design. The consultant will have to coordinate these different contracts. You start with a preliminary design and then you get into the detailed design. On those final points, technology can help. The various detailed designs can be put together. And you have a larger plan where you can visualize the designs, you can spot the inconsistencies. So instructions can be given to elaborate on the details. Technology such as BIM can help us get rid of the omissions, discrepancies and ambiguities. We will adopt the technology for new designs. But in this case, the E V A wasn't spelled out. So we asked the contractor to perform the works and then they did the work based on that price. Thank you. Ms. Young. Three point one six. New technology. There were variation orders. Three-dimensional visualization of screen captured images, drive-through simulation videos and also a smart fire system mobile application. So were these tools not considered before and then it, they came up only afterwards? Three point one seven audit said. The highways department should keep under review the adoption of new technologies. So how is the department reviewing the technology and how does it measure the success? Mister Tong Liya, so it's about BIM and the apps? BIM, Building Information Modeling. In two thousand and seventeen, the planning started. In two thousand and eighteen, the work started. BIM wasn't part of the contract. It was added only in two thousand and nineteen. It came out in September two thousand and nineteen. It was close to completion. BIM made a difference. Now, for road safety audit, the tool helped at design and planning. That safety review was needed. It was also needed during construction and when the road opened. Now with the BIM tool, we could anticipate where improvements may be needed and where the line of sight might be blocked on the road even before that road opened. So for this road safety review, BIM helped. We also created simulation videos with BIM. The construction may take more months for a road. So we create these drive-through simulation videos for motorists to get used to the road. Many people use the technology. Months before the road opened, a hundred fifty thousand people browsed the information. The contract did not require the technology at first, but later on, we found out that the technology was helpful before the road opened. So we decided to adopt the technology and hence the V O's were issued. Ms. Ms. Yun's Young. Is it a growing trend to issue V O's? To introduce new checks? I don't know, maybe the technology wasn't there yet. So the technology wasn't part of the tendering. So is it common to issue V O's to adopt new technologies? You may have been able to achieve savings had you adopted the tech earlier. Halfway through the contract, you adopt the new technology and that may cost you more. Mister Tong Liya. The work started in two thousand and eighteen. There was no requirement to use BIM. That's why it was only in September two thousand and nineteen that we issued this V O. Works project spanned four to six years. New technologies emerged during that period. Once you adopt the new technology, a V O is needed. It also depends on the difference the technology can work. In this case, BIM worked. When new technologies emerge, we have to look at the cost effectiveness. So we have to approach that on a case-by-case basis. For long projects, we look out for new technologies and adopt that where appropriate. Ms. Yun's Young. Chairman, I support the adoption of new technologies. We need technology for site safety. The audit report recommended different reviews as to the success of new technologies. So for new works, new projects, will we require in the tender documents the use of new technologies by contractors? What's the position of the department? Do you keep an open mind on this? Mister Tony Yang. I mentioned BIM and four S smart site safety system. These are new technologies. Now for all tender documents, these technologies are mandated. The Development Bureau, along with other works departments, we talk about these new technologies in construction. When we come across technologies that are fit for purpose in Hong Kong, we will put that in the document. We decided to adopt four S. That's why the Development Bureau updated the guidelines in two thousand and twenty-three for works projects with a sum over thirty million dollars. Now, if we come across new technologies and we test it and find it works, and then that technology will be required in future contracts. Ms. Yun's Young. Now my next question has to do with construction safety. Mister Edwin Wong brought up the reporting of injuries. She brought up the statutory requirement. That is covered by the employee's compensation ordinance along with its statutory requirements. This may have little to do with the Development Bureau. After all, it's about reporting work injuries. There has to be a mechanism to address workplace safety, construction site safety. Contractors are supposed to file reports. I see delays here within sixteen months. There were three months when the contractor did not submit the report. That's not ideal. So poor or very poor performance ratings were given. Those contractors may be barred from tendering for a while, but what about the penalties? We know the contractors fail to report the injuries. That had a direct bearing on safety. So how do we address that? So how do we address that problem right away? It's the here and now. Now, we heard the adoption of new technologies just then. So the question is, does the government require improvements through V O's right away? So what's being done to address work site safety right away? Mister Tony Yao, we have safety review meetings every month involving the site engineer and other stakeholders. At those meetings, we looked at the causes of accidents. Cases are looked at. Where needed, appropriate actions are taken. We discussed the crane problem just then. At once, safety review meeting, we decided on a more detailed checklist for crane operations. And a toolkit talk was given. Now for this crawler cranes, a permanent system was introduced. So those regular meetings are a standing mechanism involving the contractor, the project owner, and the engineers. Safety measures are discussed and then implemented. Now, we also work with other works departments when safety measures may be needed, not just in one site, but at other sites, we conduct internal discussions. When measures are available, we take them right away and apply those measures to other work sites. Thank you. Miss Yunus Yong. Self-reporting by contractors sounds passive. I heard there were these safety review meetings. Can we have more frequent meetings? Can we make these meetings regular? The contractor may fail to submit a report for various reasons. With regular meetings, you can keep an eye on work site safety. Would the department take more proactive measures, say, regular meetings to follow up on site safety, Mister Tony Yao? Those meetings are held every month. Site safety is in action at every moment. There are safety officers from contractors. Site staff also inspect the site every day. Staff from the highways department also inspect the site regularly. Sometimes we do more frequent checks. We don't just wait for the meetings for things to happen. When an accident happens, we take immediate follow-up actions. We do checks on the site safety, smart site safety system. It's also important for workers to follow those guidelines and use the equipment. The smart site safety system works because it helps us keep an eye on what people are doing. So that leads to improvement. Now, some people may show up where they shouldn't. The system helps us spot it. Someone's health conditions may affect their work and then we can spot that. So we do daily checks. We also have the smart systems and when things go wrong, we take immediate actions. So we have this comprehensive approach to improving site safety. Miss Yunus Yong, last question. It's about four point two six. To Monchala Kok Link, to its north. In December twenty twenty, the road opened. In twenty twenty-one, a traffic survey was conducted. And that showed in two moon, the main road, Wang Chu Road, for example, the traffic volume went up. The V C ratio was also higher than before. And it went up to one point one seven later on, so that meant traffic jam. So my question is for the traffic jam in Two Moon. Would there be more surveys? How will the traffic jam be addressed? What improvement measures would there be? Transport Department. We are aware of the busy traffic along Wang Chu Road. We have adopted different measures to redistribute the traffic. The immediate actions we can take are improved signage. Now for motorists, they take Two Moon Road via Wang Chu Road to Long Fu Road, all the way to Toomanchala Kok Link. To the west, there is an alternative. They can use Chengtun Road, Yuntang Road, Chiming Road, and all the way to Longbin Road. But motorists don't like the many junctions and the traffic lights. They don't like that alternative. So our approach is to ensure smoother traffic along the alternative route so that more people take the alternative and fewer people use Wang Chu Road. So better signs can help and we have taken that measure. Around the Long Fu Road roundabout, in late twenty twenty-three, we widened the road so that it's now a three-link road instead of two-link road. Now the road sees greater capacity. So people now can expect a shorter wait to get into the roundabout, one minute or a minute and a half. Now for the alternative route, there are junctions. We have works going on to widen those roads. One has been completed, three are under planning, the third one in twenty twenty-two, Qingting Road and Mingting Road. We have already widened that junction. Long, the other one, Longbin Road, Wushan Road. Late last year, the work started, October last year, that is, and in mid this year, those works will be completed in phases. For Ming Kam Road, Sepu Kam Road, we have also planned widening works. So we're trying to get those works started in the second half of this year. So we want to give motorists one more option. It's not just Wang Chu Road. We want more motorists to take the other path. People were concerned about the many junctions. We want them to use that path. So people will have two options and that will take pressure off Wang Chu Road. Miss Yunus Yong.
So the V C ratio once stood at one point one seven and with the new measures in place such as road widening, imposing a light, a traffic light control junction, et cetera. Have you monitored the situation to see whether the V C ratio has improved? Right, the V C ratio was one point one seven in twenty twenty-three. After the measures you mentioned, has there been any improvement? We've introduced some measures, as I said, some works will commence in the near future, as I said, and we'll continue to keep the matter under review. Now for the uh link, the usage on the whole is still on the rise. And we are monitoring the section of Wang Chu Road at the moment is still very uh busy. And for the road junction project, we want to complete it as quickly as possible. We are basing our observation on the twenty twenty-four date, uh year twenty twenty-four data. Well, we'll continue to take the works forward. Now, if uh despite the improvement works in place, traffic remains busy, then what other alternatives will you have? And what is your target V C ratio? Is it below one? I mentioned some short-term measures, but we do have some medium-term measures in mind to improve traffic condition along Wang Chu Road. Apart from improving road junctions, at two locations, we plan to build new slip roads. The first one is Long Fu Road. So that there is a direct link from Qingting Road to Long Fu Road leading to the link, and this can help divert traffic from Turn Moon Central to Turn Moon West. The other location is Turn Moon Road northbound, um leading to the west of Haifu Road. Again, we want to build another slip road. These are medium-term plans with which we want, we hope to improve traffic condition in Wang Chu Road. Upon completion of design of the projects involved, we'll strive for your support for resources. Right, two more members would like to ask questions for the second round. Uh let's take a break now. It's ten thirty-two, right? We'll come back at ten forty-five. Thank you.